I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great liberty for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with 2.02, the approval of tonight's agenda.
I move the board approved the agenda as presented.
Denise, when you're ready.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And into approval of our April 5th study session minutes.
I move the board approve the April 5th, 2020.
I will make a comment as well. I see in our room this evening, we have all four that actually ran over the course of the last several months. When we met with Mr. Kearns and Ms. Rogers, my first question of them was if they had recovered, and they both were kind of begrudgingly kind of shaking their head a little bit. But I do want to thank Mr. Bryant and Mr. Samick for being here as well, for putting your names out there. I know that is daunting, and you've been through a lot, but thank you for your willingness to step up and serve as well. So we present those election results for your consideration this evening.
I move the board declare the election to be in order, and that Daniel Kearns and Karen Rogers were duly elected to serve as directors for the Liberty School District for a three-year term.
Second. Denise, when you're ready, you can choose who got second.
A.J.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, man. And with that.
And with that.
Dallas, you want to come on up and kick us off here?
Yes, I think I echo your reaction, Mr. Bartlow. This is kind of the bittersweet moment of our evening as we get ready for reorganization that will be taking place, and we say goodbye to two of our departing board members. My mom always told me I hated goodbye, so bear with me, okay? This month, we choose to dedicate honoring excellence to two gentlemen who are both incredibly passionate about Liberty Public Schools and our community at large, and they both made the decision last year to not seek reelection to the board. Scott Connor was appointed to the Liberty Public Schools Board of Education in November of 2009. That is a throwback photo right there we pulled up. He was then elected by our district stakeholders in 2010, 2013, 2016, and 2019. His service on the board also included the role of board vice president from 2010 to 12, and then board president from 2012 to 2015. Andy Rothman began his service to the board in April of 2013, and has now completed three terms over the course of the past nine years. He too has served in the role of board vice president and president during his tenure. Those are details of the incredible years of service they have provided over 22 years combined, but these photos that you're seeing are what we are always going to remember these two for, passion for not only our staff, our students, but we wanted to include some of those photos. I don't know who gained access to those family photos, but we definitely wanted to include those in there because I know that they mean such a great deal to you. Again, I know Sandra had mentioned last month or during her retirement video how fortunate she was to be able to connect and get to know board members. I speak for our cabinet leadership team that I would echo that, that it has just been so great to be able to get to know each of you, and I look forward to remaining in contact as do I know so many in the district here in the coming years. So with that, I'm going to ask for a big round of applause from Mr. Andrew Rothman and Mr. Scott Connor for your. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Bartlow. I know they'll, I'm sure, share some remarks. I know there's some guests in the room this evening, but again, thank you for your service, and it's been a pleasure to work with you over the last decade plus. So with that.
Thank you, Dallas. Thanks for putting together that montage there. You know, Scott and Andy, as I was thinking back through this and the time that you both have served, we don't always think about it necessarily when we're in this room, but the thousands, I mean literally thousands, of students, teachers, administrators, faculty, staff, you name it, that you guys have touched in some way, shape, or form that we probably, I know I don't always recognize, but I don't know if you recognize that as well, but I think, you know, that service is undeniably amazing in what you all have done. I want to take a moment and offer up the opportunity for any other board members who may want to say thank you for the service and say a few words for Scott and Andy if you choose.
I would like to just take some time to acknowledge it's been a benefit to come on a board where these two men have had years of experience, and so we're able to provide leadership and funded knowledge that isn't available when you're a new board member. So both of them have insights that I've observed and appreciated.
And I'll echo that as the, for the next few minutes, the newest one here. It's been a pleasure to work with you both, and I feel like I've learned so much from you, but I mean, one thing I know is true is you guys care about the kids and the staff of this district, and that's what we're here for. And so, you know, to learn that from both of you and for all the time you guys have put in, I really appreciate it.
Well, I can't say a lot because you know what will happen.
I'm guessing you might shut it to your.
One or two, one or two. You know that I've always appreciated your perspective, and I will miss our long conversations.
Well, they don't have to stop.
We don't have to stop. But I do not appreciate you leaving me as the most senior member of the board.
You're the old one.
But I will wish you well as you move onward.
Yes.
And I will miss your ability to say exactly what needs to be said at exactly the moment it needs to be said. So thank you to both of you for your service, and thank you for the opportunity to sit here.
Thanks.
And to both of these gentlemen, thank you for your leadership. Some more quiet than others, but I appreciate the comments that both of you have made over the years, whether or not I agree. We know that that sometimes happens, but that's the way it should be. And so enjoy your Tuesday nights that are not spent in this boardroom. I'm sure your families will enjoy having you at home. So thank you for maybe nods? Who knows? But thank you for everything you've done for the district.
If we're both running again next year, you'll know. Our lives kicked us.
Well, you can still come and sit in here.
That's true.
You'll hear and come and sit.
Well, Scott and Andy, I give you guys the opportunity to either say a few words, recognize maybe some folks who are here with you tonight to support you, who have supported you. I think we all recognize that family is actually really involved in supporting what we all do up here, so feel free to take a few moments.
The senior member?
The senior guy? Yeah, okay. Well, first of all, there's, you know, there's a lot of memories. You think back over 12 years. I was talking to my kids earlier tonight, my youngest twins. One is a senior at Missouri State, and she was in third grade when I started this gig.
Wow.
Her twin sister's the same age. And Thomas, you found a picture of me handing my son his diploma in. That was, that would have been 2016. Those are, you know, some moments I'll never forget. Before I say too much, I also want to say, you know, the four people that ran this year's election, we as a community so appreciate people standing up and being willing to put themselves in the line to do this. This was a very close election. This was a hotly contested sometimes election, but we've got good people in the community that are willing to stand up and do this. And Dan and Karen are being seated tonight. We've got two really good people that are going to be part of this board going forward. And it is a major class act for Matt Samick and Kyle Bryant to show up and share them on as well. So thank you to all four of you for doing all that. Bottom line for me, Bren Abbott, if you're watching. Bob reminded me that Bren took 20 minutes in his exit speech, so I'm not going to do that. So sorry, Bren, for bringing that up, but we're all going, when's he going to talk? Bottom line, this has always been about the people, and that's, I think, is something I can say every corporate job I've ever had, every other group endeavor we've had, that it's about the people you serve with. There's been so many good people that I've served with on this board. My first board meeting I sat between Evan Tripp and Bob Young in 2009, and no pun intended, that was a trip, to hear some of the side commentary going on at the time. Jeff Akright, Bren Abbott, and Eileen Houston Stewart, and Lori Tritz, and the list goes on, and Charlene Armitage. These are people I learned from along the way, so I really appreciate that. But bottom line for me, and I'll end with this, is that regardless of what happens here in the boardroom or at Central Office, the rubber meets the road in this district in the buildings with teachers and principals that are running buildings at Manor Hill, at Shoal Creek, and Heritage Middle School, and Liberty Middle School, and the high schools, and on and on. So, you know, we're on TV, we make policy, and we set some overall directions, but at the end of the day, the true heroes of this district are not us sitting up here, it's the people working with kids every day, and that's teachers and principals and what I'm sitting right, standing right back there right now, former principal, not current principal. But we truly appreciate the people in this district that make it what it is. So for that, I just felt honored to be a part of this. I feel humbled to have been elected into this position a few times by the community, and honored to work with such a great organization that's, at the core of it is the people on the front lines working with our kids. That's where, that's where it all comes together. So I'll miss you all. Thank you.
So I echo what Scott says. It's one of the best parts of serving the last nine years has been the people that I've been able to meet and get to work with that our paths would likely not have crossed otherwise. So I feel like I'm better for everyone that I was able to meet, and, you know, all the past board members that we talked about, you know, this group and the prior groups. It's been such a high-functioning board with the ability to share ideas and not have to worry about judgment, ridicule. Even when we have opposing viewpoints, I don't feel as if anyone has at any point felt they couldn't share that perspective with everyone. My family, my wife and younger daughter are both here tonight. I think my kids were kindered in the third grade when I started. I've got one in college now. For their sacrifice, for all the times that I've had to miss to serve on the board, you know, my tenure has been kind of bookended by selecting a new superintendent. Unexpectedly, Dr. Jungman, I think, got his position in Springfield within months of my initial election, and then the pandemic. And after the selecting the new superintendent and the additional hours that went into that, my wife was like, I didn't think this was going to take up that many hours. And then 2020 comes along, and COVID says, hold my beer. So between those two, we've done a lot of great work in the district. I have to say that during those two periods of time, our focus was primarily on those two topics, but we always kept one thing in mind, and, you know, there's a lot of rhetoric that goes on during the election season, but I feel as if, you know, the board moving forward, just keep in mind that there is no our side, their side, there's only one side that matters, and that's what goes on in the buildings, what's best for the kids, and making sure that the teachers and staff have what they need to provide for our kids. And Dr. Tucker, you have my permission to retire anytime you want now because I don't have to pick.
And that's my wife's watching.
Well, thank you both. Appreciate those words, and we'll take a moment to gather your things and leave.
We do have our traditional recognition for you all as you exit, which is a same gift that we provide to our retiring staff, and I think it's a great tradition as far as a school bell, so we're going to get that to you. But before that, I wasn't sure what direction this would go, whether it would be, you know, professional or whether it would be more of a roast.
Which direction are you going to take?
What I've discovered over the course of my time as a superintendent is that you get closer to your board officers, and each of you have either served or likely will serve in some form or fashion as an officer in that role. And you know it's bad when you get a call from Scott or Andy, and your kids ask, are we related to them? Because they call so frequently, we're always on the phone. But it's that type of accessibility to your board president and your vice president that you want to be able to think through and thought partner because that is not often available. And so I know whether it's conversations that cabinet has had over the years in working closely with you and providing information or answering questions, you've always comported yourself professionally, you've always done a phenomenal job, like you both said, on behalf of kids in the classroom, and that's what it's all about. And so you will be missed, but we know you're not too far away should we need to lean on you as far as community events and activities, so we thank you for that. Thank you to your respective families as well, because I do know the sacrifice that it takes. So we wish you very well. And with that said, Denise, if you want to come forward and provide them with their bells.
Thank you. If you want. Thank you.
I think there's a pedestal in there as well.
It actually rang.
There's a, there's a nice little pedestal.
Oh, there is.
Make sure it's not Andy.
The poster says, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
We'll take a moment to transition here as we move.
Sure. Yep. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Welcome to this side of the room first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll see you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Was the last time you was down?
No, my, my new daughter will always say the same. I'll get it.
Okay, we have two empty seats we need to fill, and I believe there is an oath of office to be administered, so if Mr. Kearns and Ms. Rogers would come up.
I do solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Missouri.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of school director in and for the Liberty 53rd School District.
The duties of school director.
The duties of the Liberty 53rd School District. The county of Clay, state of Missouri.
The county of Clay, state of Missouri.
To the best of my ability, for and to long.
To the best of my ability, for and to long.
All right, we'll take a moment as they gather things and head on up. All right, the reorganization continues. I'm going to hand it over to the superintendent to move through the next couple of points.
Yeah, thank you, Denise, for your assistance in administering the oath. We do have a reorganization as part of our agenda this evening, so the first item on the agenda is the election of president of the Board of Education, and so at this time, we'll consider the floor open for nominations for the position of board president.
I move the board elect Nick Bartlow as president of the Board of Education.
Second.
Nick Bartlow's been nominated for the position of Board of Education president. Are there any other nominations for that position? Okay. Having received no additional nominations, then we will close nominations. Is there a motion to elect Nick Bartlow as president by acclamation?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kearns. With that said, Denise, would you please call the roll?
I apologize, I did not hear who made the motion.
Karen Rogers. Yes, thanks.
A.J.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
Nick.
Epstein.
Congratulations, Mr. Bartlow. We'll now open the floor for nominations for the position of Board of Education vice president.
I move that the board elect Angie Reed as vice president of the Board of Education.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Byrd, seconded by Ms. Graham. With that, do we have any additional nominations? Hearing done, nominations are considered closed. Is there a motion to elect Angie Reed as vice president by acclamation?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Marriott, seconded by Mr. Bartlow. Denise, would you call the roll, please?
A.J.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Angie.
Epstein.
Nick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, into 4.05, appointing our board treasurer, unless there's any discussion about it, we'd love to have. Ms. Sullivan, continue to serve in that role. Any questions?
I move the board appoint Cindy Sullivan as treasurer of the Board of Education.
Second.
Denise, when you're ready?
A.J.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Angie.
Epstein.
Nick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, into 4.05, appointing our board treasurer, unless there's any discussion about it, we'd love to have. Ms. Sullivan, continue to serve in that role. Any questions?
I move the board appoint Cindy Sullivan as treasurer of the Board of Education.
Second.
Denise, when you're ready?
A.J.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Angie.
Epstein.
Nick.
Yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Reed.
Thank you.
We'll turn the remaining reorganization items back to our board president, Mr. Buck.
Okay, moving through our reorganization, we do have the need to appoint our MSBA delegate and an alternate today. Ms. Reed and Mr. Byrd serve in those roles. Do we have any nominations for, let's start with the MSBA delegate, the primary?
I'll continue. I can continue. I can do it.
I will continue.
A.J. wants to continue? Okay.
I move the board appoint Angie Reed as the MSBA delegate and A.J. Byrd as the alternate.
Second.
Denise, when you're ready?
A.J.
Epstein.
Dan.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Angie.
Epstein.
Nick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, into 4.05, appointing our board treasurer, unless there's any discussion about it, we'd love to have. Ms. Sullivan, continue to serve in that role. Any questions?
I move the board appoint Cindy Sullivan as treasurer of the Board of Education.
Second.
Denise, when you're ready?
A.J.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, man. The one that always makes me the most nervous. Lord knows. I hope Denise will continue. Any comments, questions, conversation?
I move the board appoint Denise Aldrich as the Board of Education secretary.
Second, before she can say no.
Denise, when you're ready?
A.J.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes, the final vote of confidence. There it is. Seven, awesome. Okay, that concludes our board reorganization. We are into public comment. Well, we'll let it go. Okay, good. All right, I'm going to begin public comment. Lots of people here tonight, which is great, a lot of support, which is wonderful.
Lots of kids.
Lots of kids. It's good to have the kids back. Which, is it EIB or StuCo or R.I.?
Yeah.
Good, congratulations. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for making it before the end of the year.
So we asked within public comment, certainly we want people to be able to express their opinions and thoughts. Ask that you not make comments or inferences, either positively or negatively, about any specific individuals within the district. Certainly if you have concerns or affirmations you'd like to address about specific individuals, we could take those offline, make sure they're properly and efficiently addressed. As a reminder, public comment for us as board members is not a time for conversation or dialogue with speakers at the podium, so while we're not interacting directly within this meeting, please note we're taking notes, following up with those speakers if they so choose for a follow-up. As our speaker approaches the podium, remind them that people addressing the board will be asked not to repeat what somebody before them has said. It's a single person, so there's nothing to repeat. Persons wishing to address any subject concerning Liberty Public Schools and/or education may do so at the podium. Persons addressing the board are asked to keep their remarks concise and to the point. Each speaker limited to three minutes. Person or persons may speak only once at our meeting, and concerns brought forward during public comment may be addressed by the superintendent or appropriate staff members usually within a week. So with that, I have Ms. Lucy Chu first.
Hi. Good evening. Obviously, you know, my name's Lucy Chu. I'm a senior at Liberty North. I just wanted to come and thank you guys for everything that you've done for us. I've been in the district for 14 years, so it's just insane, and I've just had such great luck with all of my teachers, and I've found such a passion for teaching now. So I'm just really excited, and I wanted to thank you guys.
Well, thank you, Ms. Chu. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, as we move into the remainder, we'll take a moment of pause. I know there's some people who, certainly we're here for the reorganization and may not want to be here for the remainder, so don't feel bad if you choose to walk out. We won't stare. All right, moving into consent agenda number six. As a reminder, our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda, listing several items for approval by the board, of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to ensure an extensive and thorough review. As a reminder, items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all Board members and the public in advance to ensure an extensive and thorough review. As a reminder, items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any Board member.
I move the Board adopt consent agenda items 6.01 through 6.06.
Second.
Denise, when you're ready.
A.J.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Into section seven, our reports from the administration, starting with Innovation and Learning.
We will welcome Dr. Westfall to the podium regarding our Innovation and Learning report this evening.
Good evening, thank you, and welcome, our new Board members. On behalf of the Department of Innovation and Learning, Dr. Moore and I have a couple of things to share tonight. This month, the district has started state testing, started on April 4th, and is continuing to the last day of school. Christopher Hand, our Director of Assessment, continues to collaborate with elementary and secondary building leaders on creating a quality and safe testing environment for MAP testing, grade levels three through eight. And then the secondary level, and of course, testing, which includes Algebra I, English II, Biology, and Government. Across the district, the test coordinators have trained their building staff during the month of March in order to prepare them for testing, and at this time, about 20% of our students have completed the testing. The second item is that Liberty Public Schools' Summer School 2022 is right on the edge of getting ready to start. So we are moving forward with our teacher assignment requests, being close to completion, and our student enrollment is continuing to rise. So since student enrollment opened in March, we now have over 5,100 students who have enrolled for summer school. That is comparable to our 2019 numbers, and we are just in April. This is pre-K-12, and is almost 100% of the predicted capacity for the program. The Summer School Department has received 373 full-time educators who have applied for the positions, and we have a total of 450 requests which include part-time and full-time. That is 89% of our LPS staff who would work with our students over the summer, if we filled that right now. The Summer School Department will be sending out email assignments later this week, probably tomorrow. So we are excited to get that started and start assigning our classes. Also, our Department of Student Services is currently in the process of enrolling our kindergarteners for next year, so hold on to this one, it's the class of 2035.
Wow.
Whoa.
Can you believe that? All right, so at this time, we have enrolled 528 students through our enrollment process. This summer, we began our kindergarten readiness screening, which is new to all incoming kindergarteners in the state of Missouri. The purpose of the screening is to understand the learning needs of the incoming kindergarten class. And it comes, the screening tool that we will be using is the Dial-4 assessment tool, which measures the motor, concepts, and language skills of all of our incoming kindergarteners. And then last but not least, we have our Pathways and Seal of Bili literacy ceremony, which is scheduled for Monday, May 2nd, from 6:00 to 7:30 at Liberty North High School. We will recognize 155 students who earned the pathway ribbon grades K through 8. This is twice as many as we did last year. We will honor 77 students who earned the Missouri Seal of Bili literacy, 69 standard, and 8 distinguished. And then 55 students who earned the Global Seal of Bili literacy. The languages that we are representing this year are Spanish, German, Romanian, Macedonian, Vietnamese, Chinese, French, and Swahili. Five additional students are completing their assignments actually this week. So we're very excited, and that's all of our news for tonight.
I just want to underscore that last part, because it's crazy cool in that we have recognition for students who are working in languages that are their first language.
That's right.
And we don't offer those courses, so just the fact that we provide this recognition for continued, I guess, acquiring of their native language is phenomenal. We've only done this for several years, but what an asset to have as a student exiting, not only working on perhaps English language learning, but to have that recognition of your language of origin, I think is pretty impressive. So want to commend our staff, our teachers, who worked to get this program going, and asked, could we do this, and we said absolutely. So if you have an opportunity to attend that recognition, please put that on your calendar. It does conflict with some Hope Awards, so we're going to have to divide and conquer. But what a phenomenal recognition for those kiddos.
You can probably get multiple languages at both ceremonies, so either one that you go to will be good.
That's true. Any other questions for Innovation and Learning?
I do. Is there, I noticed that Dr. Solari is busy with his early child, early, not early childhood, early college, the other end.
Yes, yes.
Applications, do we have a cap on that? Because I noticed, I mean, there's a great number of kids here, but I didn't know if we said...
So we round it each year, the next year will be our third year, the first year we did it, we capped it at 25 students. This year, we capped it at 50, and next year, we capped it at 75. And actually, the budget is very similar to what it was with 25 because of the reduced tuition through MCC. So we've been able to add more students because of the reduced tuition. And also, Dr. Solari's done a great job of collecting all of the textbooks back and reusing them year after year, semester after semester, so we've been able to save quite a bit of money doing that. But yeah, so for next year, 75 is the number that we're going to be skipping with. However, if we have a student who makes the cut and wants to do it, and that puts us at 76, you're not going to expect that.
So how do they make the cut?
They have to have a certain GPA with this school district and attendance, they have to have a high enough attendance, and then they have to take the Accuplacer for math and English through MCC, or have a high enough ACT score that qualifies them.
Okay. That is excellent information to have, but what a great number of kids to be doing that.
And it's not, can I add, Angie, that it's not just the, it's not just the number that we get in, but it's the number that we complete successfully that really is the difference.
Well, that's what, so how many do, that was my next go-to.
I mean, literally, we've not had anyone not complete.
We've had two, we had maybe two students who stepped out, and then to say, you know, it's just, it's a little bit too much for me right now. But they've always finished the semester they were in, and then they would pull back out and go back to the high school, but that is just a very, very small number. Most of our juniors follow up and do it again their senior year, and we have several students who will most likely get, receive an associate's degree next year, so that's exciting.
Wow. And Dr. Westfall, do we have enough teachers from the district applying for summer school, or are we going to have to go to Kelly Services?
Depends, right now, our fill is 89% with our staff, and then we're still recruiting. In addition, some of those positions, we just don't have their certificate specific or position specific. So upper level, like 6, 7, 8, if we can't get the right number of social studies, then we end up with an alt cert situation. The other thing is non-instructional staff, like nursing, for example, we're always trying to figure that out, so.
I'd also like, at this point, the lovely individuals in the back of the room, the EIP students, welcome to the board meeting, we're glad that you came. I'm sorry you didn't come earlier in the year, you couldn't come twice. But what a great job from the report that you guys have done on receiving scholarships. And what a great crop of possible new teachers for Liberty Public Schools, like to put our plug in there whenever we can. And in particular, I'm going to do a little shout-out to Lily Brancato, who was a speaker at the avid graduation at North last week. And is a, I hope I can say this, is a first-generation college student in her family. Congratulations, and I'm so proud of you, as I'm sure everyone is, for you choosing to come into the field of education. Your speech was amazing, even though you didn't think it was, and I think you'll make a great teacher. So congrats. But congrats to all of you for choosing this great field. So, thank you, Dr. Westfall, I took a couple of questions here.
Thanks, Dr. Westfall. 7.02 then is our Office of Equity report, and we'll welcome Dr. Dixon Sehorn to the podium.
Now, that's a tough act to follow for the showcasing students, but that is amazing. I actually heard that speech at 3, and it was fabulous. We talked about that. So good evening, and congratulations to our newest Board members, Dan and Karen, we're so glad to have you with us on this evening. I just have three quick things to share in the form of highlights. Those of you that have been with us a while are aware of our equity action plans and equity audits that are in progress, and we're so excited that that work is just moving right along at the school level and department level. We have, when we think about audits, sample topics like a review of building-wide grading practices within a particular content area. A school culture belonging environmental scan. A student demographic data analysis in terms of looking at discipline data, SEL data, and academic data, and seeing how that data triangulates. So these are topics that school leaders and department leaders have chosen on their own in terms of a deeper dive. And so we will have an opportunity for reflections at the end of the year, and come May and June, I'll be meeting with them one-on-one as part of their reflection, and discussions about their own learning, and how we move the work forward going into our next school year. So very, very excited about this work that is happening here in the LPS. Secondly, we've had some stakeholder engagement opportunities with, of all students, secondary students. It has been a joy and a delight for those of us that have been a part of the DLT Equity Workgroup. We've had a number of school leaders that are part of that work group, as well as directors, and they have facilitated those conversations with students, and I think I've said this before, they have given us an earful. So our team is currently sifting through all of that data and making sense of it. We had over 70 students participate, and that was at every middle school and all the high schools. And in terms of students that participated, at the 7th and 8th grade levels and/or 11th and 12th grade levels. And while we had many more students that were eligible to participate, everything hinges on parental consent to participate. And so we could only work with students whose parents gave them consent. Again, over 70 students participated, and we will use that data to inform our teacher practices in classrooms and our leadership practices at the school and district level moving forward. So as soon as we have that data, we will be more than eager to share some of the highlights. And then last but not least, our Belonging Professional Learning has formally concluded by way of the work with Cobb and Crown Apple in terms of facilitating sessions with us this year. The Board level, you all were part of some Board governance sessions with Cobb and Crown Apple, and then as well as our district leaders, participated in four professional development sessions during our DLT meetings. Also, we've had some district leaders who, again, volunteered on their own to participate in a year-long book talk series of that actual text, Belonging to a Culture of Dignity, they have shared their learning. It was just an exciting time for us to kind of, just put a feather in the crack, if you will, during the last DLT session that we had, as they shared their learning. And we now have others that have expressed an interest, and so we'll have some summer sessions as well for those that could not participate during the regular school year. So we will have a June series for, again, those school leaders and directors that want to participate in that. And then at this point, we're having conversations with the Core Collaborative around what our work will look like for next year, really aiming towards having some onsite coaching support available for school leaders and teams, and then within departments as well. So that is where we are as of this time, and I'll entertain any questions, if you have any.
I am really looking forward to see what the students said.
Yes.
Because secondary students have great thought processes, and I'm really curious as to what their perception of things is.
Thank you so much for sharing that thought. We actually asked them about ideas or strategies, and so, you know, sometimes you have to be careful what you ask for.
Yes, you do.
But out of the mouth of Dave's data is what I call it, so we're excited to see what it looks like once we get it all compiled, and really what the main things are that come to service.
Dr. Dixon Sehorn, I know you mentioned on your equity audit's going to be shared with school district leaders months of May and June. My anticipation or hope would be that that would bubble up to us as well here at the Board just to see that data.
Absolutely, just as I had shared the equity action plans with you at the beginning of the year, what they look like. As we have those reflection sessions, then there'll be just kind of some closing thoughts on outcomes of that work, and then of course, from the audits, I'll be sure to provide like a high-level view of what were some findings.
Sure.
And then how that will inform the work moving forward, absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions of Dr. Dixon Sehorn? Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, our finance report from Mrs. Sullivan, you'll hear from her several times this evening, but we'll start with her report from her department.
Good evening, congratulations, Mr. Currents, Ms. Rogers, glad to have you here. Tonight, we have one donation to recognize, and that was a monetary donation of $3,000 from Tammy Keenan and the Kaufman Foundation Matching Gifts Program. It was donated $1,500 to the LHS Debate Program and $1,500 to the LHS Theater Program. So we would like to thank Ms. Keenan and the Kaufman Foundation for those generous donations to the district and Liberty High School. I've talked every month about tax collection, how it's lagging, that still is the case. We are right at 96.33% collection rate. The average for the past five years has been right at 99%. We have two more opportunities to collect delinquent taxes, that would be May and June. I don't anticipate that we will reach that 99%, history will tell us, we will probably be more like 97%. Look at the trend data, and when we have a year like that, it will eventually bounce back up in a couple of years as people are trying to sell a house or what have you, then they'll have to pay those taxes eventually. So it will be eventually collected, but this year, it doesn't look like we're going to be up to our usual collection rate that we've experienced in the past. And then that will probably dictate what we do with the budget amendment, when we set the tax rate in September. We may shoot a little lower on that percentage than we have in the past, just based on most recent data. So more to come on that as we get to that portion of our year in September. I also am looking forward, next week I will be going to the Missouri Association of School Business Officials Conference at the Lake. And it'll be nice to connect with my colleagues and see if they're seeing the same thing, or kind of what's going on in other parts of the state. I will be presenting there as well, so looking forward to that opportunity next week. Audit Finance Committee did review the financial statements this month as they normally do, they did not have anything to pass on to you. Their next meeting is May 15th. We do have three members whose terms are expiring this year, so beginning in May, we will start advertising in Quick News for applicants for that process. So if you are aware of anybody you would like to encourage, or anybody watching on TV, we would encourage you to apply to that committee if you are interested in serving the district in that manner. So that's all I have for you tonight, until we talk again a little bit later about the expenditure budget, unless you have any questions for me now.
Now, I'm just curious what you're presenting.
Expenditures.
No, 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 at the conference.
Oh, at the conference, sorry. Audit preparation, how to prepare for your annual district audit.
Very cool.
Yeah.
And Cindy is, she wouldn't say this, but she is one of the officers with Missouri Association of School Business Officials.
How did we not know that already?
Now you know. But appreciate her leadership, not just in our district, among other places, but then also across the state, so. I know a tremendous resource for beginning new folks to the central office, so.
Very worthwhile organization.
Other questions of Ms. Sullivan? We'll see you in a bit. Next up then, as far as 7.04, Mr. Anderson with our operations reports.
Thank you, just a few items I'd like to highlight off the monthly report and then a couple other items. So first of all, Health Services Department and staff, just want to commend them, they kind of put together a quick project to purchase and replace all of our AVs across the system. Put them all into one uniform product, and it has some enhanced technology that helps us kind of monitor them and keep them functioning properly. So appreciate their work in ensuring that that very important device is updated across the district. Also wanted to call out Gary Majors, all of you are very familiar with Gary, our Director of Safety and Security. He was just recognized by the MSBA Center for Education Safety, received a certificate for, in terms of their Director of School Safety Specialist. He had to go to the state for some training there, and I know he's a very highly sought-after resource across the state, and certainly within the metro, so just want to recognize him for the great work he does. Kids' Own Department, highlighting there, they've updated their website recently, then they've also moved over to a new management system that had been a long time coming to get that updated, I think it's much more user-friendly. I think it's much more user-friendly, the parent portal is a lot easier to navigate. And so I think as families kind of move over to that new system next this summer, they'll really appreciate and recognize that change and appreciate that team for their work on that. And then the capital plan, we'll continue to keep you updated on that over the coming months. As for those who've been around a little while, you'll remember, we start reporting out with some photographs and progress updates once the work really begins in earnest. That will start kind of May turning to June, so you can look forward to getting those updates over time. And then last, the Facility Master Plan, not much to share tonight, other than the survey is kind of winding down and closing out. We have the phone component and then the online component. The online is still open for the next few days, so would encourage anybody in the community that wants to fill that out and make their opinions known, it's a great opportunity to do so. And then here at the May 3rd study session, we'll report out some of those findings along with context and other progress that has been made as we've refined that project list and put some more precise estimates on those projects. And that is my list, so I'd be happy to take any questions.
You have a lot of information in here. Thank you for all the information. It'll take a while to digest it all.
Yeah, team does a nice job there.
Yeah, at that point, I know we changed the structure here, and if I haven't said it before, I'm remiss, but I appreciate the goals, the projected end date, and the updates as we go along. I know it may seem like a little bit of extra effort on their end, but it really helps us out, so appreciate that.
Yeah, and our crew, you know, they're not part of the strategic plan directly, and so this is a way to kind of honor that process and then kind of make sure that we're basically doing the same thing on our end as the rest of the folks are. So I think they appreciate being able to do that and share that with you all.
Steve, I have a question. Regarding USDA and meals no longer being free, have you thought about how that might affect some part of our student population?
Yeah, we have had regular meetings on that and communication, part of that first and foremost. We've already began to share that with the community, obviously it's out there, I think, more broadly. But equipping families, and really the main thing that we can do is to try to assist families in filling out for free reduced applications. And so really going to step up those efforts through the summer and assist families kind of moving to that as much as we can. So we'll be back to where we were previously, and we'll have some work to do there and help the families out whenever we can. I think just to, as a point of reference, prior to the pandemic, before meals were free, the Liberty Education Foundation stepped in and really helped families in need and retire some debt as we move families to free reduced status. So I think they anticipate that they're going to continue to be engaged as well. So I think we're doing all that we can right now, but I think a lot of it has to do with trying to get folks to apply who could qualify.
Okay. We've got a plan in place. Thank you.
Yes.
And it'll be interesting to see somewhat post-pandemic where those rates fall as compared to where we were pre-pandemic, on top of that inflation, how the economy's performed, how families have been impacted.
Right.
But the effort really is on the front end on getting us, or getting them to engage in the process and the application, so we'll continue to wish that.
It was about 20% as a district, where we had been. We're down to about 15 as we transitioned COVID. I think our best estimate is we're probably, should be closer to 25 across the district, and so that's our goal as we kind of move this forward.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Anderson? Thank you. 7.05, up next then, our Human Resources Report from Dr. Vogelar.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to share the work of Human Resources. We've uploaded a report for you. I'll highlight a few items out of that and then just take questions that you have at the end. So with regard to our strategic plan, Rebecca Fisher, who's our Wellness Coordinator, is working with wellness coordinators in surrounding districts to try to turn a corner in amping up engagement and participation in wellness initiatives by having kind of a competition, school district to school district tapping into the school spirit that we have innately among our student population to incentivize employees within those organizations to get more engaged in wellness. We're excited to see that level of cooperation result in some change with regard to our wellness initiatives. On the Grow Your Own side, the Grow Your Own Students of Color Initiative that we do to affect the teacher pipeline, these are students of color within Liberty Public Schools who are going to graduate and are competing for incentives, economic incentives to help them complete their degrees, and in exchange for that, they come back and teach for Liberty Public Schools. And that selection committee is wrapping up their process. We look forward to introducing those, that new class of recipients in the May Board meeting. You'll have an opportunity to meet those students as they head off to college. And then on the administrator side of Grow Your Own, our work with the Leadership Academy, we've got one more meeting after this week, so we have a meeting on the 21st, and then we'll have another meeting on May 5th. The meeting on the 21st was going to be the last meeting of the year, but a snow day pushed back a February meeting to May 5th. So thank you to Dr. Moore, Dr. Westfall, and Dr. Shannon, who have prepared to present in February, and then they've been sitting on that to reveal it to our participants in May. So it's been a good experience, and in a couple of days, we'll have a chance to meet with the participants and talk through their shadow experiences that they've had this year with administrators, principals, and assistant principals that have been investigating them over the course of the year. Highlight a couple of items out of the report itself from the department, just updated numbers in there with regard to the health screening and risk assessment, our numbers from April 7th. So since then, we've had a few more screening events. The 653 level of participation is now up to 855, so we've added a little more than a couple hundred employees. That's as of April 13th to wrap up those screenings next week. That's a service we do to our employees so that they can get some, you know, important screening numbers that help with their risk assessment. They can share that with their doctors, or they can just go to their doctors to do their well-person checks and participate in incentives to offset the costs of their premiums as a result of that. And then the other update I wanted to give you, as you know, we are watching closely our exempt resignations. So these are the teacher pipeline, certificated staff that are turning over. The data chart that's on the report shows 85 certificated employees that were leaving by the deadline of that report. It's now up to 91, so we've added six resignations since that data was up. I think the data is a couple of weeks old, but six more certificated resignations. The other number we're watching are the leaves of absence and no new leave of absence request since then. So the nine that was reported on the report that we uploaded is unchanged with us as well. So wanted to get you those updated numbers since the deadline for uploading that report. With that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
And so the 15-day period for returning contracts, is that expired? So we've got a better picture there?
Yep, that's left, and we did see a little bit of an uptick. We usually do, as some employees that are trying to decide, do I come back or not come back? They, obviously, when they're up against that deadline, they make a decision, so we did see that uptick slightly.
Dr. Vogelar, do tenure teachers have to turn in their contracts by the 15th?
We ask them to, because it does communicate to our leaders positions that have to be filled. Obviously, the sooner we can know about vacated positions, the better off we are in filling those positions and so for students, we ask them to do that. But Missouri statute allows them to unilaterally walk away from a contract commitment all the way to June 1. So even if they sign the contract to communicate their intent to return in the fall, they have the ability to resign after that date. Probationary teachers do not. Once they sign that contract, then they're locked in for the year now. For those of you who have been in education for a career, you know Liberty Public Schools manages that differently than a lot of schools. A lot of schools have financial penalties when people want to be released from their contract. We do not. We work with our employees, we understand life happens. They work with us, our folks that need to get out of contracts work with us to make sure we get suitable replacements in the classrooms. Because of the extent to which they cooperate with us, we are eager to cooperate with them. And for those who've been on the board for quite some time, you know that. We do release people from their contracts from time to time, and we never consequence them financially for doing that.
So do you feel that we're filling as we normally should? You've got, you know, X amount, you've filled 48 more or less positions today, so you feel like that's going typically for the year?
Yeah, a little above typical. So it is typical that our new beginning teacher programs, our launch of the school year, the NTII that Dr. Westfall leads, typically we see about 80, 85, 90, on some years 100. When I came in 15 years ago, we had a new class of 140. So it fluctuates. I would say the last few years, we've probably seen more around that 80 number, and we're already at, what did it say in the report, 86 positions that we're needing to fill. So, you know, we're already where we typically are at the end of the season. So we'll see a slight uptick in that, in that level. 86 separations so far on the report, and we've filled 48 of them, so we'll fill more. I think by the time all is said and done, we'll probably see close to 100, which is a little bit higher than what we're used to, but certainly not atypical if you look at the trend data.
Right. What year are we in with Grow Your Own teachers?
Yeah, this will be our fifth, our fourth class rolling in, so our first class will be seniors next year, and if they graduate on time, which I know that that is becoming more and more a loose expression.
Yes.
Then we will see our first class of graduates in the 23, 24 school year.
Wow.
Yeah. And thank you to the board for their commitment to, all of you, your commitment to incentivize students of color to choose our profession and then choose to come back and work with Liberty Public Schools after they complete their degree.
On that note, because he's here this evening, typically doesn't get the recognition, but Dee Rosecrans is here as well, and along with Dr. Dixon Sehorn and Dr. Vogelar was really at the beginning stages of the Grow Your Own program. So I see you back there, Dee.
So Dee chairs our steering committee, so the selection committee is chaired by him. And I don't know, Dee, if you want to highlight, there's a group of about, what, eight or 10 folks that work with you closely all year long on that program in the selection process. So they meet regularly, they market, they develop the marketing materials, and they meet to land on the decisions. And this year, they're going to be presenting six, maybe seven names. We typically do four, but as each year goes by, we get more and more students expressing interest. And because we have had some students drop out of the program, funds are available to offer more than four this year. So you'll see six for sure, possibly seven in the May Board meeting. So Dee, do you want to comment at all on that?
It's a team effort. We have representatives from both high schools, including Melissa Taylor, our EIP person who left, and it's, those of you who know me, know that I'm not very patient, but we're making progress. And so thanks to the board, because this is one of those returns on investment, it's like a four-year delay based from the first cohort group. So we're working steadily. We've got quality students at various levels in college, and we're excited about the incoming prop of our fourth cohort. And as Dr. Vogelar said, with no change to the bottom-line commitment by the Board of Education, we may have a seventh student who has his paperwork in, and we just missed him the first time around. So stay tuned, as Dr. Vogelar said, we both introduce, happily introduce those students, whether it's six or seven, and perhaps their parents. We've had to do this virtually in the last year or two, so hopefully we can, as a person in the Board of Education, thank you folks for your commitment.
Thank you, Dee. Any other questions?
Just around classified, so I know we've made a lot of progress, put a specific recruiter there to look at that. Nutrition services seems to have had a pretty decent uptick as I suppose we've come a little bit more out of the pandemic. Is that just a seasonality thing, just what's going on there, or is that a greater trend we need to be concerned about?
Yeah, I don't think there are seasons on the classified side that they tend to have. And I'd have to look at trend data to see if that's up or if there is a commonality for that. The data in the report show the number of open positions currently, and so that might have more to do with the candidate pool and decisions to fill than necessarily an uptick in vacancies in comparison.
Anything else for Dr. Vogelar? Thank you. Just a few highlights from the superintendent's report this evening. Do you want to thank?
Superintendent taking notes.
They have studying to do, they have in-depth courses to attend. Where was I?
Just beginning.
I do want to share and express appreciation to a group of business partners that met at Liberty High School just a few days back as part of the Liberty Economic Development Corporation. We hosted kind of an after-school event in which they were afforded the opportunity to hear from students that participate in a variety of programs, from early colleges, as was discussed earlier, to Northland CAPS, to internship opportunities, Network 53, EIP, the list goes on and on. They heard from about seven, six or seven students, and those students shared their experiences in those real-world learning opportunities, but then also were able to share what's next for them after high school, and the skills attained, the experiences, the dual credit that was obtained as well. Our challenge, of course, afterward, because Colleen was there, we always kind of do a call to action, was for those business partners to be able to try to identify opportunities for students to plug in. And so just as with any organization, in particular Liberty Public Schools, we have an HR department, we have a finance department, we have nutrition services and transportation. And as businesses think about their organizations, it's not just their primary focus, and I'll use Crowley Furniture as an example, it's not just someone interested in selling furniture, it's they have all of those departments of which students can gain access to opportunities and careers that they're interested in pursuing. And so that was our call to action. Appreciate Colleen and the administration of Liberty High School in helping facilitate that student panel. As was mentioned earlier in respect to this season of year in terms of testing, we know map testing, and of course exams are upon us. This year's information and data will serve as a baseline for MSIP 6 as we roll out MSIP 6 next fall, knowing that MSIP 5 and MSIP 6 is not quite apples to apples, it's more like apples to oranges as it relates to assessments and being able to see how our students are doing. So we appreciate the work of our students, certainly our staff, as they enter into the season. The work continues in and around the Success Ready Students Work Group, as we've shared before, and how we can perhaps move accreditation and accountability and assessment in a different direction in the state of Missouri, not necessarily amending MSIP 6, but perhaps creating an innovation path alongside MSIP 6. But then also, what does that next accreditation, accountability, and assessment structure look like? That work will culminate later this summer, early summer, with a presentation to the State Board of Education. We'll certainly share that information with you. Another item that we've been working on is the student's learner record. It's not just a transcript any longer as a student graduates and takes their transcript with them, but instead, we want to think of their academic performance as a learner record, both in and outside of the classroom, of which the transcript is a portion of that. But then we also want to recognize them through credentialing and perhaps badging as it relates to their real-world learning experiences. And so our aim by the end of this semester is for every senior graduating in the class of 2022 that has obtained a market value asset to also be awarded a badge through Badger that then will be portable that they can take with them. For those of you that have LinkedIn profiles, you know that badging is an integral part to social platforms like LinkedIn in which you can display your badges, but that's something that we're working on gaining regional recognition. And so appreciate Dr. Moore and our real-world learning team working on that to begin badging or credentialing our seniors starting this semester, but then also kind of leading that charge across the region as it relates to cooperating school districts. Last couple of items, as Mr. Anderson shared, the Facility Master Planning Process survey is out, and so we look forward to gathering that data and sharing that with you at our upcoming study session. I know that Mr. Byrd, Mr. Bartlow, and Ms. Reed attended the MSBA Regional Meeting that was held a week or so ago. At that meeting, we heard updates from Grandview, KC Center, as well as the Hickman Mills School Districts and the work that they're doing in and around real-world learning. In addition, we heard a legislative update on things happening in Jefferson City. Won't take too much time other than to say that we continue to monitor and track that. I will call out one particular bill, I believe it's House Bill 1680, that unanimously passed the Missouri House of Representatives just earlier, 135 to 0, which seldom happens. It happened to be a bill that some of our students have been working on with the help of Liberty North High School teacher, Mr. Kurt Gates, who's usually in attendance with us. He's not here this evening.
Track me.
There you go. He's coaching. So from that standpoint, we celebrate that work. Several of our students were afforded the opportunity to go down and testify in front of the House of Representatives. Now it moves over to the Senate, and we're hopeful that that gets through. We've taken this to the legislature, several legislative sessions, and as you all know, sometimes it takes multiple attempts to be able to get through Missouri legislative process, so stay tuned. Last thing I would share- Last thing I would share as far as end-of-year items, there is no shortage of activities, whether it's spring sports.
What you got?
Banquets and recognitions or concerts.
What is that?
As well as retirement and a variety of things.
Oh, no.
So please, check your calendars and availability. We'll send items to you as they surface. In terms of our last coffee with the community, we will be recording that and pushing that out later next week. And then Mr. Ackerman and I have a series of end-of-year updates that we'll be kind of taking on the road with each of our campuses before we send them on their way for summer break. So we look forward to scheduling those here in the coming days. With that said, we'll certainly open it up to any of you for any questions you may have with me.
The bill that Mr. Gates and company.
Yes.
Took down, what was that about?
Specific to advanced placement courses. And that there's inconsistency among institutions as to acceptance of a high enough AP course score in terms of the exam to then be awarded credit. And so they've worked on that the last couple of years. Several other states have that uniformity, whereas Missouri doesn't. Typically, if you score three, four, or five, then that transfers to college credit. But the aim was to try to create some of that consistency among universities and higher head.
I think it's great that students went down to do the testifying.
Yeah, they had quite a few stories to tell.
I'm sure they did.
Mostly good, so. Other questions? Thank you.
All right. New business, let's start with a couple of board policies for review.
You have two presented to you this evening for first read. And I want to actually start with the second one that is listed, JGGA, Deals with Secclusion and Restraint. If you had an opportunity to look at that one, it is basically an overhaul of that particular policy.
A little bit.
In terms of the slash-through and markups and so forth.
Probably the time.
It's replacing a lot of language. That then informs the first policy that's listed there, and that's JGA. The title is going to catch your eye in that that is around corporal punishment. The district does not enforce or utilize corporal punishment and has not for many years. But nonetheless, there's a couple of paragraphs within policy, JGA, that then we've changed a couple of terms based on the adjustments to the seclusion and restraint policy. So those are shared with you this evening for first read. As we typically do, if you have questions in the coming weeks, we'll bring that back to you in the month of May for consideration and action. There is a timestamp in and around JGGA, and that is to take effect no later than July 1st as we prepare for the 2022, 2023 academic year, so.
And all of which is the result of legislative changes.
Statutory changes, that's correct.
And is this, this is MSBA language straight? Or has, did our legal counsel also tweak it or add some things to it?
Both originated with MSBA. Once we received that, we farmed that out to our administrators, our cabinet. And then at the same time, our in-house counsel, legal counsel, Mr. Capps, has the opportunity to look at that as well. So just as you're seeing it for first read, we've been looking for feedback from our cabinet members. This time, we have a pretty slim update. Other instances, it's a little lengthier, so it may take a little bit more time. So great question.
In 802, the preliminary expenditure budget update.
We're going to welcome Ms. Sullivan back to the podium. And as she approaches, as you'll recall, several years ago, we held our budget conversations to the month of June. And really, at that June board retreat, dove in and covered everything from start to finish on the revenues, the expenditure side. Since then, as Cindy has entered into the role of CFO, we've started to kind of divide that up, starting in January with the budgeting process, but really bringing those pieces forward with the board in March, April, May, culminating in that budget approval in June. So in March, we hit on revenues. This month, we're going to hit on expenditures. In terms of May, you'll have a preliminary budget to digest and take a look at, with Cindy's constant disclaimer of it's subject to change. And that is the best. I'm jumping ahead there. But as best as we are aware, in terms of new information, we certainly fold that into our budget planning. So thank you to Cindy and her team. We'll turn it over to her for the next few moments.
I just think you're very lucky that we don't do that half-day anymore.
Thank you. I agree.
That's a long day. This is, each presentation is probably long to some of you, but that's a long day. So we're going to take a very high-level look at the preliminary expenditure budget update. And that is indeed my first comment. It's already changed, so.
That's just your consistent comment.
It is.
Anytime.
It's what happens. It's my life. It's reality for us. So what will happen? As people get new information and start to change what's already been put in this document, we will stop the moving pieces somewhere toward the end of May, early June, so that we can finalize the data that comes to you for final approval in June. And then as additional information still continues to come in, that will take the form of a budget amendment then during the actual FY '23 year for changes that people may have. You will probably see a document, you will see a document in May, that's the complete budget. And unless something changes in a great one way or the other, the June document will not change much. Those small changes, we will wait because it takes an enormous amount of work to flow it through the complete budget document for something very insignificant. So that's the expectation that you will see in May and June. This first slide, there we go, is the big picture overlook at the district budget by object. And by object means that it's describing the service or the commodity. So it's a very high-level book. And that is an accounting code term in the Missouri State Accounting Manual. What this will just basically show you that how changes flow through from year to year. And the most notable changes are most likely going to be in the capital outlay line, that you can see how they go up and down. And when you look at the total budget like this, that is because of bond issues. So you will see three years' worth of bond projects on the capital line that make that line vary significantly from year to year. So that causes the most swings in the bottom line of the total budget. When you get to the operating budget, it's more of a trend that we can notice, and I'll show you that picture a little bit later on. So we're going to go through each one of these really quickly just to tell you what's changing and what we're expecting. The first thing on the list was the employee salaries. Salary and benefit recommendations are developed through the Team Liberty Administrative Salary and Welfare Committee process. That's collaborative work, discussions, and decisions made with the help of staff members and administrators. And as you have seen at the study session prior to this meeting, we are recommending a 4.12% increase to salary schedules and a 50 cent increase to the classified schedule. So that amount of money is right at $3.8 million increase for with benefits to the salary and benefits line that you're seeing today. What you won't see today is a really true picture of that ending number of 98.8 million. Because as Dr. Vogelar indicated earlier, we still have forty-some staff to hire. So that 98.8 is truly based on the current number this year plus the enhancements as we know them to sit today. So as the hiring process continues, I will again run employee cost projections, and that will give us a better number. But even in May, if hiring is not complete, September, when I run employee cost projections again, we'll true-up that number as well. So it's a moving target, more so than anything else, which is eighty percent of our budget. So we do the best that we can with the information that we have to present you the true picture of what we know is going to happen. We've been pretty successful at putting all the pieces together and coming up with a fair budget. So hopefully, that is the case again this year. So you will see that change a little bit in May.
So the salaries are increasing just slightly as a percentage of the total budget? Is that right? I know total, I guess percentage-wise, is that 54%? Is that consistent with?
It is very consistent. It runs right around the 50% for that piece and in total, 80%. So yeah, it's staying right there with the trend of the total budget. Yeah. Employee benefits piece, this is basically consists of mostly medical, dental, and vision. Those are the most expensive things in the employee benefits piece. They are about 17% of the total budget and 19% of the operating budget. I'm looking, I budgeted for a 10% increase. And when you see that, you have to realize that of that 10% increase, half of it will be next year and half of it then will be in FY '24 because we are on a calendar year for our benefits and a fiscal year that's June to, or July to June. So you get two pieces of it. So 10%, you'll see half of that total as an increase in the budget this year, which right now is about $617,000. What will take place when Team Liberty reconvenes in August, we will meet with our broker, Holmes Murphy, who will then present our estimated insurance benefits and the new costs to them. They've been very good to work with about helping us pull levers that might be able to make that a better cost and make sure that we can continue to provide a free plan, a district paid-for plan to all employees. That's a goal of Team Liberty. So we're shooting for that again this year. But we have about 10% for increases that are in the budget already. So more to come on that as Team Liberty makes those decisions in August and September.
And one piece, while you're transitioning, that's not included in here, that 10 or 12 years ago, we had to fold in were increases to peers and PSRS.
Yeah.
Where that's been held steady at those rates for at least that long.
For sure.
With the exodus of staff, educators retiring and so forth, we'll have to watch that and monitor that moving forward. But that's a significant amount in the event that that were to continue to go up or move back to increasing.
Right. And the district does contribute 14 and a half percent of certificated salaries and 6.86% of classified salaries to the retirement pool for those staff. And as Dr. Tucker indicated, it hasn't gone up. And as of now, retirement is not thinking, it will go up that percentage. So unless something happens differently in the coming years, they've been very good at their investing and providing the gains on their pool of money to pay out retirees to keep those percentages where they are. So they've done a great job with that. So we don't anticipate that that will change. Purchase services, you will see, is about 9% of the total budget. It was really nice this year. I had the opportunity to go out and meet with every budget manager, and they inform a lot of the purchase services and materials budgets. Team Liberty adds, saw does the bulk of the salaries. But it was really nice to be able to go out again and meet with all of those budget managers and talk about budgeting and just how things were going. So we enjoyed that process of the budget preparation this year since we hadn't been able to do it in the last couple of years. In the purchase services, we saw several increases and decreases that offset each other through this whole process. But I wanted to mention some notable changes in the whole budget. And as we've talked about before, the Children's Services Fund, that is not included in here in the expenditure budget, nor was it included in the revenue budget. We are still awaiting approval of that grant. And when it is approved, it will add approximately $3 million in expenditures, some in purchase services, some in supplies, and the corresponding revenue. So it's a neutral add on both sides. So it's best not to include it here since we don't know exactly where all of those things will fall when it does get approved. We had a Kaufman grant that is complete, so that was a $130,000 decrease in purchase services. Kid Zone is revamping their summer program, so that will become less expensive, so that will decrease. We had our initial meeting with our brokers, Lofton, for our property and casualty insurance. And it's going to go up about $310,000, which is probably not unexpected. The property insurance, about 11%, 3% for liability, and cyber 70% increase. It's a small premium, but it still is a big jump. It's $30,000 premium, but 70% increase on top of that. So all of that's going up about $310,000. We are seeing a sharp increase in education or special education services for nurses and behavioral specialists, which you've heard people talk about the need for those supports for our students. So that's going up. Sped tuition is going up, where we have to send students out when we can't accommodate their needs, we send them to other facilities. Cost of that is increasing. We're seeing an increase in deferred maintenance and maintenance and repairs kind of offset each other. We had a couple of one-time things happen this year that were offset by some other increases this year. So we've got a little balancing though there. And we had a one-time tech expense for a fiber platform for schools that happened this year that will not happen next year. So overall, that's where the purchase services are going to land with a total expenditure of about $17.3 million anticipated. Supplies and materials are also about 9% of our budget. And some notable things there. And it is increasing. It's going from about $15.1 million to $17.3 million. And you'll have to think about COVID and the way we did things. We didn't spend as much in the prior two years just because we didn't have the need. So now that things are getting back to where we're having all of our activities and doing everything that we used to do in 2019, those expenditures are going back up. And you saw that purchase services decreased, though we're kind of flip-flopping some there. But some notable changes in the supply material budgets. Elementary resources are going up by about $560,000, and that's for math and PLTW. Those are just some things that need to be replenished and provided, so we will have an increase there. We're purchasing some textbooks for science and social studies at the secondary level. We are increasing technology instructional supplies for some replacements of things like projectors and screens and desktop computers and monitors. So just normal supplies that have a replacement cycle that are being taken care of. Nutrition services, which you would expect food costs are going up. And utilities and maintenance are also going up as a result of inflation for a lot of this.
All right. So now that you brought it, I'm just curious on how we're thinking about inflation and how we bake that into the supplies and utilities.
So as especially maintenance, with my discussions with their director, he's been very thoughtful about the projects that he's taking in consideration and doing and has built in somewhere between a 3% and 5% inflationary cost and has been very diligent in scaling those projects and knowing that he's probably not going to do as much as he would have liked just because of cost. And he'll be very, he'll watch what he's spending and taper off if things are coming in more higher than we expected. So it's not, we're going to rush in and do it all and know we're going to overspend. He's going to be very diligent about monitoring the progress of those. So we've had many discussions between all of us about containing those costs and knowing we have to watch what we're doing.
On the food services, with the government no longer providing all that, how does that impact? Is there something that shows up on your budget? Or is it just that you're collecting what you're paying out, so it's a wash? Or how does it, how does it compare in the coming year versus the way it's operated under COVID?
Well, to begin with, revenues will drastically decrease because when we offer free, more students ate. And we got reimbursed 100% for that. So it changes where we receive our revenues as far as state and federal and the amount. So we had to look back at fiscal year 19, which was the last normal year of lunch service as we knew it before, to look at what revenue we received. And so we looked and budgeted based on. And so we looked and budgeted based on that dollar value. And so it will decrease our revenue for nutrition services. Food costs are going up, so that accounted for the increase in food costs. But until they really get a good feel for how many students are actually going to be eating, we budgeted based on FY nineteen as well, just because we don't know. We had a very big increase in students eating. So like we've already discussed tonight earlier, we need the nutrition services to collect those free and reduced and feed those students and to get a good feel about how many kids will then be bringing their lunches or how that's just going to play out. So it will be kind of adjust as we go. And historical value dictated how we budgeted for this year so far.
The other piece to add to that would be the adjustment to meal prices in the event that we feel we need to go there. And I know Mr. Anderson works closely with Nutrition Services team on that. Typically, we see that if needed sometime during the summer in preparation for setting meal prices for twenty-two.
Yeah, because that will go up just because we've held it firm for a couple of years and because of the cost. So we anticipate it will go up. We just don't know what the number is or what formula for that.
And we always are, we always are at the what we have to budget. We're never charged, we're never overcharging the minimum we have to charge, so.
Historically, we typically come in at, what, net zero on expenditures, nutrition services versus revenues? Is that?
Well, typically, the nutrition services program makes money. And that's because of extras. Kids buying cookies and desserts and not the.
Some of the à la carte items.
Yes, à la carte, exactly, non-programmed items. Typically tip them to be in the making money.
It's the apples and the bananas that they're buying a lot of, right?
Right, exactly.
Conversely, though, on that revenue stream, you can reinvest that in your nutrition services equipment and supplies and so forth. So that's how that benefits you in the end, as well as improving the program in terms of offerings and so forth.
Next slide is about capital outlay. I know Mr. Anderson has previously shared with you the capital plan. And it's pretty steady this year. It is decreasing just a little bit. But some of the notable items on the capital improvement plan this year are deferred maintenance items, white fleet vehicles, bus purchases, HVAC repairs, and various site renovations. And you have seen that capital plan and he will continue, I'm sure, to share that with you as we move through the process of capital. And it represents two percent of our total budget. Debt service, debt is about nine percent of the proposed total budget. Debt service is what it is. We have a levy as part of our total levy that goes to pay off a bond principal and interest payments. And it's required, so I can't change this budget. It is what it is. We service our bond principal and interest and collect levy to pay for that. The levy in debt service can go up or down dependent upon the amount of debt we have to pay off. So you have seen that swing in the prior years as far as setting that debt service levy. And finally, we're back to this slide again, just bringing home where we are. A total budget of a little over a hundred and eighty-three million dollars this year, preliminary budget. I like to show this slide just so you can see how it all stacks up just a little bit different way. And again, this is the total budget, so it's a little hard to gauge a trend on this because of the bond years. You look then at the operating budget by object. The operating budget is a hundred and sixty-three million, up from a hundred and fifty-seven last year, that's current year. That's a three point nine percent increase, which is pretty typical for the years. And then on this slide, you can see the trend. There is a bit of a trend line with the exception of twenty twenty-one, which was the COVID year, which we asked budget managers to withhold spending about fifteen percent of their budget because that's the year that the state withheld funding until June. So you will see that dip down in there. But the trend line is pretty consistent with everything increasing about the same rate. So that's it. That's a very high-level look, like I said, of where we're going with our expenditures. I would be glad to answer any questions of you. In the budget book, you will see all of this broken out in many ways. And you can see where things are going and much more detail to all of this. But this is just a brief overview for you tonight.
Any questions of Cindy? Appreciate your work and connecting with principals and directors and kind of walking through that this spring. So a big lift, so.
I love the color coding. Thank you so much.
So the next steps on the budget, remind me.
So in May, you will get the complete budget book all put out there for you. And I'll walk through some other things, a little more detail about levy and a little more updated details that I presented to you on revenues and expenditures updated for any major changes. Then in June, you will have the same document with any changes that we've deemed necessary. There will not be a presentation unless something has changed. It will just be there for you to vote on, to adopt at the June meeting.
Other questions of Cindy?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you in May.
I think we'll see her before then.
But we'll definitely see her in May.
All right, into twenty-two, twenty-three compensation plan.
So then to bridge Cindy's presentation on budget expenditures, a big portion of that, as she shared, north of about seventy percent is salaries and benefits. And so we wanted to speak this evening a little bit more to eight point oh three, and that's our twenty-two, twenty-three compensation plan. I want to start by thanking Team Liberty and our Administrative Salary and Welfare Committee that works throughout the year on workplace well-being and salaries and calendars and other topics over the course of the year. I know Cindy and Bob and several others work alongside that. Most of you have participated in the past to see how that team functions. And I know Dan and Karen will have that opportunity over the course of this next year as well. So again, we could not be where we're at this evening without the work of that group. So thank you to them. Just as a reminder, you have seen some of this information at our study session earlier this month and that the work of Team Liberty was done a little early. And so we went ahead and included that study session as an opportunity to kind of preview what we're sharing with you this evening for first read over the course of the next several weeks as we move into the May regular monthly board meeting. That will come back for second read and consideration as part of the budget development process. But to hit the high points, some of the high points that we talked about back at our study session, you will recall that in the spring of two thousand and nineteen, the board approved moving forward with a salary study with CBIZ. We've done that every several years and used several different companies to help facilitate that. As with most recommendations, they come back with a significant recommendation that then we have to look at how we phase those recommendations in. And so this is a reflection of that work. As we move forward, we'll conduct additional salary studies and allow Team Liberty to kind of run that process and share information with you. But this evening, the high points and recommendations for fiscal year twenty-three, the coming academic year, include, one, to be able to fund all salary schedules, both vertically and horizontal. That estimated cost is one million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars. In addition to that, a second recommendation is to implement the fourth year of the fourth phase-in schedule of the CBIZ and final phase-in schedule of the CBIZ recommendation that will include column movements on the classified schedule that equates to three hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred dollars. Third recommendation is to enhance the certificated salary schedule two percent and adjust the base to forty thousand dollars. And that anticipated cost is one million, three hundred, three thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. The fourth recommendation would be to enhance the classified salary schedule by adding fifty cents to every cell, again, on the classified side, with an anticipated cost of six hundred and forty-six thousand and sixty-eight dollars. The fifth recommendation would be to enhance the professional technical salary schedules to match the average increase on the certificated salary schedule at a cost of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. The last recommendation would be to enhance the administrator salary schedule to match the average increase on the certificated schedules at a cost of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. All in all, the total estimated cost associated with these recommendations, four million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. That's just a brief, high-level summary of what is provided in your memo from me to the Board of Education based on Team Liberty and ADSAW recommendations. You have a deeper explanation on page two of each of those recommendations. So would present that to you this evening for first read. Again, as questions arise between now and our May board meeting, please let us know. We'll be glad to chase down those answers for you. I don't know, Dr. Vogel or Cindy Sullivan, if you have anything else to add in and around the salary recommendations?
Just echoing your appreciation for the team effort. A lot of work goes into it and they look at a lot of different metrics inside the organization as well as cost of labor figures outside the organization to land on what is the best path forward. Just to illustrate that briefly, you know, the cost of labor numbers that we got in October showed a four point three percent increase, expected four point three percent increase in the cost of labor. And then in March, we renewed that and the cost of labor forecast is five point seven percent. So it shows you just how much inflation, cost of labor changes are, the fluidity of it is significant right now, which is a sign of the times. Where we landed in the recommendation, the fifty cents in classified, for example, along with CBIZ Base Four, represents an average raise for our classified employees of six point four percent, which is above that forecast. But needed to be above that forecast is you've walked a journey with us on recruitment and retention issues that we're dealing with on the classified side. I think that six point four percent is not a solution. It's a pathway order and more work needs to be done. The average on the other salary schedules is four point one-two percent, which is a little bit under that forecast. But the lag was not as deep in those areas as it is on the classified side. So just in a nutshell, I think that's what I would emphasize.
You also have uploaded the work that follows the recommendations in and around schedules as far as those revisions and updates for twenty-two, twenty-three. So there are about eight documents that are uploaded as well that reflect those adjustments, certainly pending board approval later this spring, so.
I'd also say Team Liberty did some amazing discussions on this between or among the different groups of individuals, understanding that. There were some tough questions that they asked each other and some tough comments that were made. And they handled it so well. That team has come so far, but kudos to them.
Yeah, I would just add to that that, and I think I say this every year, that we appreciate the work that Team Liberty does. But unless you've seen the process and have understood the work that they do, it's hard to really describe how deeply they work on this, how important it is to them, and how much it adds to comfort with the final product that we get. And I feel like the employees who are in the room have put forward the best recommendation that they can.
And how thoughtful everybody is of the big picture, right? You've got different stakeholders in that room, different groups. And so, I mean, that's something that it's uplifting in that sense that, you know, we've got people that get that, thankful for that.
I know they're very appreciative of having the board member there as well to see their work. It's very nice to have one of them in the room with them as well.
So now they get us all.
Yeah, I'm really excited to watch it.
One question that was asked earlier this afternoon was how will this recommendation compare to what other districts are doing? Are they ready for twenty-two, twenty-three as well? And it's kind of like a poker game, talking with other districts and superintendents where they won't entirely show their hand. But we're hearing in conversations with peers and counterparts, that range of two to four percent. Four percent where we're situated, a little bit above that on the higher end when you think about step advancement and then whatever addition you might be able to make to schedules. So that's the range we're hearing. Last year, we were on the lower end of that when some of our district, peer districts were on the higher end. So it's a little competition, but we'll know more as districts kind of finalize their budgets at the end of June and do some comparison from that standpoint to bidding for the next fiscal year. More to come on that front. So again, thanks to everyone for their help in getting us to that point this evening.
Well, to keep me honest, are we one of the last districts to have a fully funded, or to have a fully funded healthcare option or healthcare plan for folks?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't say one of the last, but certainly many of our peers have a cost-sharing model. Twenty, thirty, forty dollars that are contributed by employees. And we offer two plans that are fully funded. We have buy-up plans that employees can have, but two fully funded options. One's a high deductible and the other is an EPO, which is similar to PPO, designed with the, you know, more cost controls within that as fully paid options for our employees. And I do think that's very unique.
But invaluable, particularly for classified staff.
For sure.
Who greatly appreciate that benefit and that as soon as you start talking about adjusting that in the payout of your pocket, that hits classified staff more so than it does certificated staff. And I know those conversations have been had at Team Liberty. Thus, the commitment to try to maintain that one hundred percent board-paid benefit, so. Great question.
Okay, into eight point zero four, contracts, purchases, and bids.
We do have several items under eight point oh four, and we will turn that over to Mr. Anderson to walk us through them this evening.
There are four items, three of which we would plan to vote on for approval, if that's possible. And then one's just for first read and then that would be back next month for consideration. The one that's just for first read is, we sent an RFP out in February. It's really for a workflow, work order system for tech to update that. They had five firms submit, interview two. The consensus of the team was to go with incident IQ. And so we're negotiating out that contract. We expect to have that, like as I said, at the May meeting for formal consideration. In addition to that, we also have, for consideration on first read, we let in RFP. This is for environmental services. This is kind of like professional service, similar to engineering, architectural services, where we have had a longstanding, fairly longstanding contract with this particular firm, in fact, Axiom Service Professionals. So that when we have an issue come up, whether it be mold-related, asbestos-related, we call them out and they perform the work and they help us prepare a plan. But then we tie into the bidding process and make sure that we're doing the work the right way. And so this is just basically renewal of that arrangement. And we are asking for this to be expedited because we're getting ready for summer work. We're anticipating, as usually happens when we start replacing carpet and the like, that we may have some, run into some issues along the way. So we appreciate your consideration of that tonight. And then the last two items are under the emergency services provision, world policy DJF dash one. One item is a contract with HL restoration. That's to perform some cleanup work of the sewer backup that would bring north that required some special attention.
Some quick special attention?
And then the next one is with North Point Boiler. We had some issues at Bridgeview with a water leak in one of the air handlers and had to call them out on quick notice to remedy that situation. So again, consideration of the two emergency services and then Axiom Service Professionals for consideration. The other would be on the first read.
And then Axiom, I know we've got it here for first read, but we did receive notification of that earlier of the approach. So it's not the first time we've seen this.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
I move the board approved the agreement with Axiom Service Professionals LLC and the emergency services as listed.
Second.
Denise, when you're ready.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the Board of Education, starting with nine point zero one, legislation and advocacy?
They're busy. There are lots of bills hanging out there. The session ends the fifteenth of May. And anyone is welcome to go down and hang out at the State Capitol. MSBA would be happy to take you and find you a seat. The dinner that we attended whenever, some interesting, interesting pieces. The dinner that we attended whenever, some interesting, interesting pieces of legislation coming up. You can access those on MSBA's website. I think that was it. What did I miss?
Well, the one thing I'll point out, so Angie's and Dr. Tucker mentioned it, cooperative school districts in Kansas City, we went, certainly some legislative stuff from MSBA brought up. I said it's not cooperative, but it's a regional meeting for MSBA, my mistake. I'll take that one.
It's like...
You know, there's all kinds of people to coordinate with. One thing that Melissa Randall, who's the head of MSBA, brought up was this information that she received with regards to what the public thinks about certain political organizations. And the question was posed to folks through an online survey, and it went throughout the state of Missouri, online, I'm sorry, phone survey, throughout the state of Missouri. Question was, for those of you who know of your local school board, I'd like you to tell me if you have a favorable or an unfavorable opinion of that person or organization. And it is a plus 30 favorable, which I found to be interesting, and this was fielded here at the beginning of the year. So you're looking at 51% who said we're favorable, 21% unfavorable, the remainder couldn't decide. So it's a plus 30. I just, I found it to be interesting. I thought that would be something to be brought up, that there's still a lot of favorability, trust, certainly people feeling that school boards are doing the right things and continuing the process, so just wanted to bring that forward as an item.
And I think that was evidenced across the state in bond and levy ballot measures. I mean, I know we didn't have one here, but people value public education and what our schools are doing, and so I was, you know, heartened to see that.
A lot of them did pass.
Yep.
And then legislatively, too, mentioned at the, at the meeting was that a lot of what's been going on over the session is kind of finding its way into like an omnibus package or an omnibus bill and being on the watch for those as they navigate both chambers of the legislature. So as Angie mentioned, a lot of that information's provided in our regular MSBA updates. And then to Nick's point, we had the MSBA meeting that evening on a Thursday, I believe it was, followed the next morning by cooperative school districts legislative update, so you can have your fill of legislative information these days, so we'll continue to watch that.
Lots of places.
Yeah.
Looking at upcoming meetings, you see what's coming up. Reminder, the big study session, a board retreat in June 7th. Probably a question, I know last year we moved the regular board meeting to June a little bit later for budget reasons, get some additional numbers in. Are you good with keeping it where it's at?
We've talked about that with the Business Services Department, Ms. Sullivan, and we think we're good to keep it as is, so long as there, there's a quorum, certainly, and everyone's availability, so.
I know.
Again, as you've mentioned, 7th for our retreat, and then we'll provide you with that location and time span, and then follow it up with our regular meeting in June 21st.
As a reminder, if you're on the road traveling, you need to zoom in, just let Denise know, we'll get it all set up, taken care of. Finally, board remarks.
Two things. One, Avid Graduation was so much fun, great kids to converse with, and it's nice to see that that program is continuing to flourish and is such a great thing for so many of our kids that, you know, just like Lilly is a first-generation college student, and that's exactly what Avid is designed for. It, you know, and those are the kind of fun things that we get to go to again, so I enjoy And then my second thing was, I was at the Laffey meeting. Steve has a paragraph under the nurses' information about fentanyl. I suggest you read that. It is, it is scary what is going on in our communities and how kids do not understand the finality of that, that interaction of drugs. So read that, research it, watch for some Laffey material to be coming out.
And to clarify, Laffey stands for?
Liberty Alliance for Youth, and it's mostly the counselors, the social workers, and the nurses in the district, but there are also a lot of other community people. It's just a large portion of it has now become so many LPS people, which is great to see. Bear was there, which was excellent, who is our emotional support dog from the high school. So it's nice to be back to in-person meetings. And then I'd also like to do one third thing. Thanks to Lynn for putting together and helping to facilitate the character trait recognition. Those are great. It is so nice to recognize students for doing good character things, whatever the character trait is or school is sending. So it was Lynn's last one, it was the last one for the year. Those are also fun things to go to, so it's nice to have those back on our calendar that we can actually do things in person. So I'm done.
I'll just say, welcome, Dan, welcome Karen. Appreciate you all getting up to speed, actually even prior to the election being done, right? So you guys ready to jump on board and looking forward to having you here and contributing, so appreciate that.
And I just want to echo that, too. Thank you both for running and, you know, as formerly newest board member, there's a lot of great resources in this room, so if there, you know, ever any questions or anything like that, there's, there's great people here to talk to, so we're happy to have you guys.
Thank you. You're a veteran now.
I know.
I can't say it anymore.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks for, to the community, for one thing, you know, and to my family and to all, everybody here, you know, I'm looking forward to being a part of this team and to listening to everybody and learning and jumping right in.
Say ditto to that. It is almost.
So I just have one other comment on a different topic. Right before our meeting, I had the opportunity to attend the Edge Exhibition Night, and I was just struck by the, the level of work that's being done, the work products that kids are putting out, the level of reflection that they're putting into the projects that they're doing. And personally, as the parent of a child who is getting ready to apply for colleges next year, I was really able to see, a lot of colleges now are not looking at GPA or test scores, they're looking for a portfolio of work. They want to know everything that a kid has done. They want to know if they've made podcasts, if they've written papers, if they've done poetry. They also want to know if they've done things like internships and other kinds of real-world learning experiences, and so it really was just an illustration of the work that our kids are doing and my own real-life experience of knowing that for kids who are going to college or choosing to go to college, that they have the opportunities to produce that work. And that's all I have to say.
And if no more remarks, I'll take a motion.
I move the board adjourn.
Second. And Denise, when you're ready.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.